Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 25th, 2022, to order. Can I take a motion to go into executive session?
As soon as I come alive here.
I'll make my note before the motion then. Note is that we will be back to open session no later than 6:30 PM.
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Parenthesis, page 7, the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F and G, to review, approve, and/or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated January 18th, 2022, February 7th, 2022, February 28th, 2022, and March 7th, 2022. Second item pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the Chair has to determine that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session as read. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Good evening.
Oh, I have.
I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 25th, 2022, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we approved some executive session minutes, and we discussed collective bargaining for all town unions. If the Chair determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. The minutes were approved. There was no decision on B. With that, we are now back in open session. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment and announcement.
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just a couple of quick things. Reminder, tomorrow night, we're doing the annual Town Warrant Article Review Dinner at the 400 East. I can still take reservations until 10:00 AM tomorrow, so if you're interested, please give me a call at the office. And then, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we are super excited for this coming weekend for the Prelude to Art Week at the Cultural Center at 204 Sisson Road. Saturday, April 30th, is our Open Artist Studio, 2 to 6. And then, we have an art exhibit and reception in the library, 4 to 6. And on Sunday, May 1st, in the auditorium, is Plug and Play with some local bands, 2 to 6, or 2 to 4, excuse me, on that. And this is just for anyone watching. This is our way of showing and sharing what's inside of the building that many people drive by. So we really are encouraging everyone to please come and join us. It's going to be a lot of fun. I was there today, setting up with the artists, and we're excited and really proud of what's going to be going on this weekend. So I hope we see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. This announcement comes on behalf of the Harwich Voter Information Committee in conjunction with the Legal Women Voters of the Cape Cod area. So this Thursday evening, April 28th, at 6:00 PM, here in the Griffin Room at Town Hall, the Harwich Voter Information Committee is hosting, and the Legal Women Voters is moderating a Hear From the Candidates for Harwich Town Clerk. Bring your questions and join the group. And again, this is Thursday, April 28th, 6:00 PM, here in the Griffin Room, Candidates for the Office of Town Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Eric, can I get a motion on the public hearing? Read the public hearing notice.
Okay.
Please.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Harwich, Board of Selectmen, application for liquor license. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, that application has been made to this board for a seasonal off-premise all-alcohol liquor license for Malic Corporation DBA Value Mart, I'm going to ruin your name, Bahi Charbhai Patel, manager on the following described premises located at 435 Route 28, Harwichport, Mass., 02646. The premises consists of one room for retail sales, a counter, and a walk-in cooler. Storage room is adjacent to the cooler and sales room. There is one entrance and one exit located at the front of the retail room and second exit in the storage room. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on the application on Monday, April 25th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM, in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 7:32 Main Street, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to attend. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, the local licensing authority, and published in the Cape Cod Times, April 13th, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Public hearing is open. State your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Norcross, representing the Malic Corporation. Joining me this evening are members of the Patel family, including Betrby Patel, who runs the store, is an owner and officer of Malic Corporation, and the manager of record for their current liquor license at the property. Patel's been running the Value Mart since 2012. Betrby Patel has been the manager at that store since that time. Also, they've had an existing beer and wine annual license at the Value Mart since around 2012. Well, they saw the opening for a seasonal all-alcohol license that they would like to add to the store. They've had a great deal of success at the location. Very happy there. They think this will be a nice benefit to their business to have the seasonal all-alcohol in conjunction with the annual beer and wine license. Also, a nice benefit to the town perhaps, as it is kind of located right in the middle between, I guess, Cranberry Liquors and Luke, so it is spaced out quite a bit in that area. So it doesn't seem to be too much density in terms of existing liquor store locations. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, for myself or for the Patel's.
Great. Thank you. Anyone on the public wish to comment on this? Anyone online wish to comment on this? Can I get a motion to close?
Move that we close the public hearing and go into deliberations.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Don, I'll start with you.
This is a good news, bad news thing, but we'll start with the bad news, but head towards the good. In general, I'm not a real big fan of combining more alcohol with pumping gas. It's something that, as a former driver's ed instructor, I worry about. But that cat got out of the bag with born petroleum, so that's neither here nor there. The good news is that I actually did teach a couple of the Patel family members driver's ed, and have nothing but the greatest respect for the family and their earnestness in conducting business the right way. So I don't have anything else to say.
Mary?
No, I wish you well. I take the chief's recommendations pretty much to heart, and you've been in business since 2012, and he doesn't have a problem, so I certainly don't.
Julie?
I agree with Mary. I don't have any issue with her.
Larry?
I have no issues.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the, we vote to approve the new application for a seasonal off-premise all-alcohol liquor license for Malic Corporation, doing business as Value Mart, 435 Route 28.
Moved and seconded.
Isn't it on premise?
Off premise, because it's alcohol.
Off premise consumption.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Consent agenda?
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda. First, to approve the following Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, December 21st, 2020, October 25th, 2021, November 22nd, 2021, and November 29th, 2021. Second, to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission of N-Star Electric Company DBA EverSource Energy for the purpose to install 14 new pull boxes and 3,790 feet of conduit along town roads. And last, to approve the annual Harwich Police Department reappointments.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion?
None.
I remember December 2020 as if it were yesterday.
Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Joe, to Don's point, maybe at some point, we can get a snapshot of what's left. And we cannot blame current staff or current administration for how long these minutes, how old these minutes are. So if we could get a snapshot, that would be great. New business, and Mary, I would take those as two separate motions.
For one and two?
Yep. First motion, and then second after we approve the first.
I move that we vote to approve a tax bill insert for July 1, 2022, for the CRS recertification.
Second. Moved and seconded, and the CRS is Community Rating System. Just so the public's aware of that. And Joe, we do have to add that to the agendas, full spell out, if it's not in there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we start with it, and the agenda, and then abbreviate it, so we've got both present at the same time.
Just make part of our motions the whole name, so the public's aware.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Larry?
Done.
Julie?
No.
Don?
Nope.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to authorize the Chair to sign the annual Community Rating System recertification.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll.
Just very briefly, I just wanted to comment, because I'm not sure I did this last year, but Elaine Banta spent a considerable amount of time and effort putting together the report last year. A lot of work, and it came out, she was doing a lot of other activities, so it was stressful during the time. And she's doing it again. It's a lot of paperwork. And the rating that we get, we all love, well, we all love when we're in a flood plain, because it lowers our insurance. So it's very important to, this is one that affects a lot of individual residents. And so we just wanted to be sure we appreciate her hard work.
Thank you, Larry. Joe, could you extend our thanks to Elaine Banta?
Certainly will.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We'll do a motion on the, and I hate to do it to you, Mary, but would you read that?
Oh, yes. I'll print it, but hang on.
I think it's important enough for the residents to see.
Oh, you have it, Joe? Thank you. Shall I read it first?
Yes.
Dear Chatham and Harwich taxpayer, taxpayers and voters, after a decade of regionalization, it's time for our school district to revisit the original regional agreement and make appropriate updates. At annual town meeting in both Chatham and Harwich this year, attendees will be asked to vote on proposed changes to the Montemoi Regional Agreement. The superintendent has raised a concern of an unintended fiscal inequity in how the language in the current regional agreement handles assessment of the elementary schools. The smaller Chatham Elementary School has much higher per pupil operating costs than the larger Harwich Elementary School, and under the agreement's current assessment methodology, Harwich taxpayers end up increasingly subsidizing the operations of Chatham Elementary. The most substantive change proposed to the regional agreement has each town paying for the cost to operate its own elementary school. In doing so, Harwich taxpayers are provided fiscal relief, and Chatham families are insured continued operation of a high-quality elementary program at Chatham Elementary. By having each town pay for its own elementary school, Chatham's fiscal year '23 assessment would increase by $739,747, and Harwich's will decrease by $739,747, thereby eliminating the unintended subsidy that happens under the current assessment methodology. These proposed changes to the regional agreement and assessment methodology therein have been supported unanimously by the Montemoi Regional School Committee, both the Chatham and Harwich Select Boards, and both the Chatham and Harwich Finance Committees. The proposed changes are a win-win for both towns. More information about the changes to the regional agreement can be found on the school district's website. Within the town meeting warrants in both towns, the current regional agreement and all proposed changes are provided in a side-by-side format, along with an explanation of each change. We encourage your support for the articles at town meeting, signed by the Montemoi Regional School Committee, the Chatham Board of Selectmen, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, the Chatham Finance Committee, and the Harwich Finance Committee. So that's the letter.
Thank you, Mary. I'll do discussion before we get on to a motion. Larry, any comments?
I thought it was well-written and shortened to the point, so I liked it.
Thank you. Julie?
Agree. I have no comment.
Mary?
Same.
Don?
Yeah, I think it's short enough to actually, somebody's going to read it.
Thank you. I notice members of the school online tonight. Does anyone want to make a comment on this?
No comment, just we ask for your support. We are quite eager to get this out in the public, and we just need your approval tonight. And we're going to be in front of Chatham Select Board tonight. So as soon as we get you passed, approve this, and Chatham to approve it, we can get it out in the community.
Thank you, Tina. Michael, anything?
Michael, anything?
No, just pleased that you guys are considering it and look forward to taking on the next steps.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mary.
Could I just ask, are you planning on publishing it in the Cape Cod Chronicle?
Yes, Mary, that was our intention, and it still is our intention. We, I'm actually kind of in conversations with Tim Wood about deadlines, so I'm hoping we can get it in this Wednesday. If not, it will definitely be in next Wednesday. That will be after town meeting for Harwich, unfortunately, but we have been working against their deadlines.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Harwich is going to save $740,000, so I anticipate it going through fairly quickly. Thank you, Tina. Joe, anything?
No, they covered everything.
Okay. Motion, please.
Okay. I move that we vote to approve the joint statement with Montemoi Regional School District, MRSD, and the Town of Chatham.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you.
Motion on C?
Yes.
I move that we vote to apply surplus bond.
We have to do this in two motions.
Okay.
Correct, Carol? Okay. So if you want this, this is the first one.
Okay.
And then this would be the water department one.
So those are two separate motions.
Those are two separate motions.
Okay, thank you.
If you can read my chicken script.
I can. I move that we vote to apply surplus proceeds from McGurty Road Betterment in the amount of $7,107.01 to general fund to support current debt obligations.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Larry?
No.
Is all set? Any discussion? You all set? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Don?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to apply surplus proceeds for lower county road water improvements in the amount of $1,442 to Water Enterprise Fund to support current debt obligations.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. D?
I move that we vote to approve a special permit, 1891G, for one-day entertainment, Cape Farm Supply, 1601 Factory Road, Saturday, June 25th, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, outside, live music with amplification.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, I've seen, say this every year, but in a vast piece of property, if there were a prom party, your house, I would hate to think that we'd have to ask permission for you to have entertainment there. I know what he's doing, and I know that he's trying to be very careful, but I don't see the need. I'm going to certainly vote for it.
Thank you. Mary?
The only thing I'd like to comment for the public is, we've been pretty consistent with an earlier deadline, but because of where this is located, out in the middle of the woods, we're good with 11.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, no comment.
Larry?
I'm fine. As long as he doesn't try to put this on the radio, we're okay.
Well, in fact, he doesn't need a permit, because it's agricultural-related, so this is an extra. I think he wanted to give us the permit fee. So roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. E?
I move that we vote to participate in the Municipal Vulnerabilities Preparedness, MVP, application for low-lying roads, and authorize the town administrator to sign a letter of support.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Maybe Joe could just explain this, though, or link, you know, who's, for people watching.
We'll start with Joe.
Well, I don't know that, do you know this one linked to low-lying roads? So he said yes. I'm going to defer to link. I think, Link, I'm after just a general.
A brief explanation, because there is a very lengthy packet piece for the public to read.
I saw the PowerPoint in the packet.
It's very good.
Really quickly, this is a continuation of work that was done through the Cape Cod Commission prior. Our town planner is, Mr. Ideman is the one spearheading this, and he's looking for letters of support to continue this in the low-lying areas, was one of the MVP grants.
Thank you. And to the public, if anyone wants to read a very lengthy packet on what it is that's in there, but it is a continuation on a program we've been involved in. Mary?
And if I could just add, I was impressed that it came from a citizens' group that addressed several issues, and we actually did something about it. So that, that all looked very positive to me.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
F is fine as well.
Okay. I move that we vote to authorize the Chair to sign a letter of commitment for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant, RFR-ENV23MVP02, for Route 124, Herring River Culvert Improvement in Harwich, Massachusetts.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
None.
Anyone in the public? Discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
You ready for G?
I noticed you didn't jump up, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to put you on the spot like Joe did link.
When you get to yes, your boss stops talking.
Always leave them wanting more.
Go ahead on G.
G. I move that we vote to approve a memorandum of understanding with Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands, Inc., for a nutrition program for the elderly, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I would do H, and if we would, do it in, well, you can do the same motion. The only thing, Mary, I would ask you to add is, on Amber Pizza Number One, pending a complete application, I noticed on April 13th, Danielle sent the owner of record, or the manager of record, asking to complete the application by writing out the time open and the time closed.
Okay.
And that time to start outdoor and time to end outdoor for the season, and that was never, or at least it's not in our packet.
Okay. Do you want one motion for both establishments?
You can do one motion for both, just on one, add pending completed application.
I move that we vote to approve the following applications for expanded outdoor service, Amber Pizza, 600 Route 28, pending receipt of a completed application, and Cape Seagill, 31 C Street.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Are these, are these the same as last year?
They are.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my only question.
Oh, you said, other than the one note from Danielle, both were complete. Good seating arrangement, everything, everything was in the packet, so.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Old Business. Why don't we start by having a conversation on this?
Okay.
Discussion and possible vote to approve and sign the deed restriction for Five Bell's Neck Road, pending final approval by Town Council. We do have, and Mary, I believe Joe handed it, a recommended motion by Town Council.
That is for the second item on the agenda.
I printed one from an email, so now I've got two. They look slightly different. This one came from Megan late afternoon.
Same item. It just excluded that, so I'll just use that.
Use this one?
Yep.
So Joe, why don't you open up the, on A. Old Business, A.
Sure. Megan has been working, sorry, the Assistant Town Administrator, has been working with Town Council Katie Klein, as well as prospective buyer of Five Bell's Neck, John Carey, and his attorney, Attorney Mizeo. And so what you'll have under your second agenda item is a proposed motion from Council that would authorize staff, myself and others, to continue working with Council, but also get the Board's approval to continue to proceed on the purchase and sale. If the Board has discussion on the deed restriction, and I would recommend, you know, we can do it all at once, but the discussion this evening on deed restriction will go a long way towards informing Town Council as to what, if any, restrictions the town wants to place on the sale of that property.
Okay.
So what I presented to the clerk of the Board of Selectmen is a motion from Council that captures the second item on the agenda.
Thank you. So we will end up wrapping this together, but why don't we have a conversation about the deed restriction, or a deed restriction if we want one, and I'll start a conversation with Larry.
Thank you, Michael. I think we discussed this, boy, time flies fast, but did we discuss this last minute or two weeks ago? But the buyers, it's my regulation, is the buyers agreed to keep the historical structure of the building up and do the internal work for whatever apartments and...
Historical facade.
Facade. And we were in agreement with that. Then the discussion was, do we need to put that in a formal deed restriction? And I, for one, trust the buyer and don't think we need to go that far. And so that's where I am with it.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, I think I was the one who just recommended we ask if they were willing to do it. So I think overall, whatever they're willing to put in writing, I don't think we need to, quote unquote, have a deed restriction.
Based on...
I mean, it would be good if we could, if they were willing to.
The Historic Commission met on this, and I believe that the purchaser was at that meeting. The Historic Commission seemed a little confused as to why they were doing and hadn't done it before. John Ideman, our town planner, stood up and thought, we should not be doing this, and it's not an enforceable action. And that's what I took away. I have the same thoughts as Larry. It is a historic building. It's 100 years old. That we have a Historic Commission. If he wants to tear it down, there's a demo delay already in place. And if he wants to do work outside of keeping historic facade or changing anything, he has to go before the Historic Commission anyway. So deed restrictions are not an option for me, and I don't see why we would have to tie the owner's hands behind his back. Mary?
I agree with the three of your comments. The RFP said that the restriction would make it advantageous, but it did not say it was required. So I don't see how we can, after the fact, make it required.
Thank you. Don?
I've already said my piece.
Okay. Joe, do you need any more than that from us?
No. All I would emphasize is that what presently exists in the draft purchase and sale is the statement under Section 11 Historic Preservation Restriction, none to be imposed, although to the extent financially practical, and based on the buyer's sole opinion, the buyer may attempt to preserve historical aspects of the current structure. So there is language talking about that in the draft purchase and sale.
Thank you. Which is plenty for me. Mary?
And is that acceptable to our buyer, that language?
That was the language provided by the buyer's attorney.
Oh, okay.
Mary, would you read that motion then?
Yes. I move that the Board of Selectmen, by virtue of, and in accordance with the authority of the vote taken under Article 17 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Vote, to 1. approve the purchase and sale agreement with John Carey for the property located at Five Bell's Neck Road, the West Harwich Schoolhouse, for the purchase price of $175,000. Five Bell's Neck Road, the West Harwich Schoolhouse, for the purchase price of $175,000. And, two, to authorize the town administrator, in consultation with Town Council and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to finalize the purchase and sale agreement for said property. And, three, authorize the town administrator, at such time as the purchase and sale agreement is satisfactory to Town Council and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to secure the signatures of at least a majority of the members of the Board of Selectmen on the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay. Any second on that?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Larry? Julie? Mary?
No.
Dawn?
Nope.
Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Nope.
And I'm an aye. Four, one, zero, Joe?
Thank you.
And, where are we now?
Bank Street.
Contracts? Uh, Joe, why don't you start with this one? So, we all have a draft in the packet?
Right.
No, that was just the draft. That, that was, Adam just done, correct? I think Mr. Howell has questions for the Chair.
Yeah, we've got a sample. I mean, I get the concept that the board acts as a board. I mean, so I'd be more than happy to sign it, but, uh, we don't have the final document. Is that something that's going to be forthcoming?
Yes, and that was what the motion included, was that we were going to get.
I get that, but there will be a document for us to sign later, because we don't have one now.
Yes.
Okay.
Final version we will sign. Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe, on Bank Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and at the risk of earning the ridicule of my team, I continue to hand my copy of the agenda away, so I'm flying blind. Thank you, sir. Other than the packet.
So, the RFP for five, not Five Bell's Neck, for 203 Bank Street.
Uh, thank you, yes. So, um, this, uh, it follows on your discussion at your meeting two weeks ago about next steps and proposed language for the, um, request for proposals for the disposition of 203 Bank Street. And so, what you have in your packet is a draft, uh, from staff. You can indicate, you can see indicated in there, there are some highlighted sections that, um, both Megan and I would find it helpful for the board to, uh, review, analyze, and discuss. And then, once we have direction from the board, we can get that RFP process going as well.
Joe, do you want to go through the, uh, highlighted pieces, and then we'll discuss them one at a time?
Sure. So, if you're looking, uh, on the hard copy, um, I apologize, I'm not working off of, um, uh, the, uh, the electronic packet, so I'm looking at Request for Proposals. On page two, first of all, under Property Information, um, you can see that we've added, um, an attachment document, and that relates to the third-party appraisal that was done, uh, for the town several weeks ago. So, that will be incorporated into this RFP. Uh, and then specifically, uh, I think really to try and, uh, go back to what the board was discussing two weeks ago, uh, right now, there's language in there under restrictions on the property. Uh, it is desirous of the town, however not a requirement, to sell the property to a buyer who will commit to a public-private partnership to allow for community access to abiding conservation lands. It is also desirous of the town, however not a requirement, to sell the property to a buyer who intends to preserve the local history and culture of the existing, uh, building. And so, what I think this is trying to capture is, as the board discussed at your meeting two weeks ago, this is an opportunity to give notice that the town has, uh, specific, uh, preferences, desires, if you will. However, they're not requirements. So, what that means is, this RFP could accomplish, or should, could appeal to any number of potential respondents. That would be those that are willing to do something, uh, on the public-private partnership of conservation, with those that might be willing to do something for, uh, preserving local history. It does not disqualify anyone that's just looking to buy it outright and use it for its highest best use, which, as we know from the appraisal, is a two-lot subdivision.
Thank you.
So, that simple statement is meant to accomplish all of that.
Okay. We'll go to questions from the board, uh, as to where we are now. Dawn? Comments? Questions?
Nothing other than the comment that, uh, the language is already getting butchered enough, as, as we live here, and that all it needed to say is the desire of the town. Desirous is like a syllable bloat.
Okay. Mary?
I, I just.
Council wrote it. I, I'm not.
And we pay them by the law.
Yeah, I'm not aggrieved in any way, shape, or form.
I just wondered if that would discourage anyone else, how, how open that is. I get that that goes in the evaluation part. So, maybe you're just putting that up in the front to just make that more obvious, because it is in that section that talks about highly advantageous, somewhat adentagious, advantageous.
Joe?
Yeah, so, yes, we're trying to put it up front, uh, to catch the eye, if you will. Um, and it's not meant to dissuade anybody. It's meant to have the, uh, the opposite effect. However, uh, in the RFP process, um, we oftentimes get questions, and that would be a great question for our respective proposer to ask, uh, because whatever they ask, the answers are then shared with, uh, an updated RFP, um, addendum to include questions that, and answers that were provided since we released it. So, it almost creates a dialogue, if you will. But, it's a dialogue that we need to capture for all prospective respondents. So, when we put it up front, we're trying to draw notice to it. Yes, it's in the, um, proposed, uh, the evaluation criteria for proposed use of the property, but it's not a requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
No, I, I don't have any questions. I mean, this is kind of similar to the other one.
West Harwich.
Thank you.
Too soon?
Larry?
Uh, yes, I, I share Mary's concern. My, my concern in reading through this is that it almost appears that we've made it a done deal. You know, we have an article in the Chronicle about this, the sharing of historical property. And you look at the, uh, just pulling off the web, the thirty, what is it? The thirty, uh, Thirty Beer, B? Beer, I got beer in my mind.
That's three weeks in a row.
The Thirty B Project, you know, it's to guarantee that its, uh, procedures are open and competitive for contracts. And so, I'm a little, I want to be sure that that wording is such that, okay, maybe desirable, but at the end, but we want nothing that stops us from people looking at this property. We do have an appraisal that does show the two sublots. We don't want to go that way possibly, but we don't want to discourage people, uh, coming into it for that. I also note, when you go through the documents, that we have an appraisal price that we need to be careful with, because we can do it at a lower price, but we have to justify it after the fact exactly why we did it. So, we do have to be careful. My concern is, I don't want this to appear as a stacked deck going forward, that it's going to be competitive when we look at our options. Now, I think there's a lot of interest in the direction overall, but I don't want us to shortcut that.
Thank you.
And so, I'd like to be careful with the wording. Go back and re, recheck that.
Joe?
Sure. Um, just in response, um, everything that you've mentioned, we are governed by Chapter 30B. And the language that you see on page two is actually derived from the direction from the Inspector General's Office, that when a municipality is looking to dispose a property, you have the right and the ability to put in, um, scenarios that go to a greater public purpose above and beyond just price. And so, this language is here to accomplish exactly that. Um, it's, in fact, I would say that if we were audited by the Inspector General's Office, they wouldn't see a stacked deck. They would see us, uh, going according to their manual on Chapter 30B and how to dispose of municipal property. So, the, really the intent this evening from staff, myself included, is to get a sense from the board, are these some of the other things that you would consider? And, and what we created was based on what we heard before from custodians of conservation land, and what we've heard before from folks that are, uh, connected to local historical organizations. And so, by putting it in there, we're putting everyone on notice that the town reserves the right to use, to, to dispose of it if these are met and if they're not met. But, if we don't do it in the RFP, then it's a stacked deck, uh, and then we're far less, um, able to do what we're looking to do.
Yes. Go ahead, Mary.
And the, the, the price wasn't in there anywhere, but I heard you say that one of the attachments would be the appraised value.
Uh, correct. If I could just go to that very quickly, what we're including in the RFP based on the property information listed on page two is the site plan, and of course, we had that from Paul Sweetser. We have the Harwich Assessing Department property record cards, even though we're not relying solely on that, and that has the higher, um, assessed value on it, uh, and, uh, the third-party appraisal. And so, what we're putting in there is, uh, all the information that we have and all the information that the board relied upon in the development of this RFP. So, again, really, the main purpose of the Request for Proposals is to give as much notice and information to as broad of a group as possible. So, we put all that information in there, and we have potential, uh, other desirous, uh, criteria that may be used or may not be used.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wastek?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, thank you for allowing me to speak. I, I think in looking at past RFPs that have gone out and the procurement process that has been undertaken, it's great to have desirous impact of what we want to see. But, if a number comes in that is just so far above anything else, you know, you're going to take, the procurement officer is going to take that into consideration, making a recommendation to you as a board. And so, when you look at everything, what is more important than the other, if someone comes in and makes an offer that's going to blow people away, you're probably going to take that versus something that may work locally. You don't know until you get it out there, and once you get it out there, people will look at the property and see where the true value is. Again, market sets price, not appraisers, not assessors, but the market.
Thank you. Um, and I, and I would comment that, uh, I think it touches every base that we discussed in our last meeting, and, and they did a good job laying this out. So, I, I have no changes unless we want to change desirous to desire, or if any other board member, um, wants to add anything, or. But, I think it gets us to where we want to be.
We'd probably have to pay him his hourly rate to even review that again.
Larry?
I agree with that. My, my concern is probably more of the, uh, of that, but also our discussion that's been leading more, trying, and I want that discouraged of all bids, so we have a chance to do what Richard says, look at it. I was a little taken back, quite frankly, by the, uh, article in the Chronicle, which made it appear that was a done deal. It didn't say that, but the picture there, so I, I don't want people, I want to be sure where, as, as I said, it's open, it's competitive, that we get to make a decision at the end, we aren't directing it either formally or informally. So, I'm okay with the writing. I think we need to be careful as a board to have an open discussion.
Thank you. And I, I think, uh, Town Administrator and the Procurement Office probably likes his freedom, so doesn't want to go to jail over this, and he's going to submit.
And for what it's worth, I don't read the Chronicle either. And you won't get a reaction, and you won't get in jail.
Any further, any further disc? Any, any further discussion?
Well, I have one comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, we've got the appraisal attached. Do we want to do a minimum bid? We're not going to? I mean, you don't want to?
This wouldn't be the first time. We've done things more than once, so if we don't get anything, the la, the last one that we just did took quite some time.
Yes, it did. That's fine.
And today's market is likely to be higher than that anyway.
Joe, go ahead.
If I may, the intent of this Swiss Army Knife Request for Proposals is to, um, enjoy the broadest, um, information and the broadest response. Um, and then we'll take it as it comes, and I'm imminently hopeful that we will get, um, a sufficient number of responses.
Thank you, Joe. Can you give us a timeline?
So, if the board's approving the language this evening, um, I would think that we can get it, um, executed with it by the end of next week, uh, which would be by May 6th. Uh, we can put a 30-day timeframe on there. Um, again, we would, uh, be tracking any, um, questions that came in and updating by addenda. Um, I believe there was a site visit contemplated in there as well. And so, I think, if we could use the month of May, uh, we could have something, uh, very definitive before the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Joe. Go ahead. Just state your.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tom Evans. I'm the President of the Board of Trustees of the Harwich Conservation Trust. I feel as though I need to jump to the defense of the Chronicle and point out that there, yes, there was an article that did, in fact, highlight the interest of two significant nonprofit organizations in this town that have been community players for a number of years. But, we made it very clear that we recognize that the RFP authority was with the town, and that we would await the RFP, and that we would respond to it. And we will do the best we can with the resources, you know, available to us. We don't know how that will stack up. We'd like to think that, that what we do will end up being advantageous or very advantageous, but this is still very early in the process, and we recognize that you set the guidelines.
Thank you.
And if I may, uh, the article was clear. It's the picture of the implication. People don't always read the words.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
Uh, just one question, Joe. Uh, how, I know it doesn't go to MLS. How do, how does that, when you say you're going to put it out, where do you, where do you put it?
So, every one of our, um, Request for Proposal goes on the town's website, first and foremost. Um, it's always the best way to get it, uh, because if you go to our website and you're looking at RFPs, you have to fill out a form, so we've, we're given an alert that someone's looking at it. Um, I believe this Request for Proposals is also, um, not Comm. Byes, but I think it might be Central Register, uh, so one of those mechanisms as well. Uh, and that's the State's Procurement Newsletter, if you will, that brings to bear. Um, again, we also publish it in newspapers. So, the folks that are predisposed to do RFPs, um, we give them several standard places to look.
We did also discuss with Danielle, at very least, putting this on, and I don't think Zillow is the right, the right word, but we did discuss listing this, or putting an advertisement out there with one of the Realtors, or, or Realty Sites, MLS, or, are we contemplating that?
Um, we weren't, and I'm trying not to look to my left. For other folks that know real estate far better than I.
Mr. Wastek, could I ask you a question?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Obviously, the town wants to get as much exposure as possible, and I found, uh, the Central Register to be, I don't want to say close to useless, but, uh, up there. And, and disposition of property, obviously, we want to get this, the word out there, and other than the Chronicle and the website, how are we going to get the word out there?
There is an option in MLS where you can do a non-exclusive listing. You can just do a, in essence, public, publicity only, that all information would have to be directed back to the procurement officer. So, any call that came in, any inquiry about the property, it, it could be listed by anyone who's a member of MLS for, it's a minimal fee, and it is minimal, to publish it in the MLS, but any and all information would go directly back to the town. The, the benefit, you have an option to put documents in there, would be literally just to refer to the RFP in the document section of it. But, again, in that case, without representation, without someone actually taking a fiduciary responsibility for the town, it would have to go back to either staff or the procurement officer for information.
Wouldn't that be seen by a lot more people than the Central Register?
I think the Central Register is very popular, myself, but I would say probably more in MLS.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
Richard, could you also do something like Leuschner or anything like that? Yeah, I don't know.
Like what?
If the intent is to get it out there, to do a private listing on Zillow, I've never seen the town do that before. In, in my 37 years of experience, I've never seen a town try to go directly to Zillow. And again, there is a, there's a code of ethics for our industry, you know, and, and if we take on a listing, we do at some point take on a fiduciary role, unless it's what they call an entry-only listing. You're entering it into the MLS. All responsibility goes back to the owner, which would be the town of Harwich. Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you do not want to be dealing with the phone calls yourself, but it would probably have to go back to someone, either on staff or in the procurement process somewhere.
I'm going to keep my comments. Okay, Joe, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that. Um, anything else from the board, also? And the board's okay with the timeline?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll move forward then.
Yes.
Thank you.
Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Megan Eldridge, Ellen Powell, and Danielle Delaney. Uh, because of them, I was able to take four and a half days off. Um, the half day was, um, me participating in an exercise. Um, the half day was, um, me participating in an exercise that I enjoy, and that was the Voter Information Committee, uh, financial update ahead of town meeting. But I appreciate the efforts of the team to actually take a vacation and I forgot all about work until yesterday. Not really, but I enjoyed my time off, so thanks to everybody, I appreciate it. That's all I got.
Do you want to, um, real quickly talk about town meeting? Or do you want one of the board members to do that?
Sure, it's coming up on, uh, Monday, May second, which is...
How many, how many days, Joe?
Uh, well, now it's technically under a week because, um, seven days from today, we'll be well into town meeting. And, um, very excited to be returning to annual town meeting at the community center, seven PM, Monday evening. Uh, a robust fifty-nine articles? I've already forgotten. Less than sixty. Um, so very excited about town meeting. Come one, come all, and unfortunately, I was told, come for two nights.
What?
That's the word on the street.
Selectmen's report, Don.
Uh, nothing other than a note that, when I'm looking at the golf, uh, revolving account, that the total fund balance on three thirty-one twenty-two equals... And that's what it, and that's what it says.
That meant zero.
I hope not. That's the whole fund balance?
So that's a number to follow, right, Joe?
Other than that, I plan on being there Monday myself.
Okay. Mary?
Nothing.
Julie? Larry?
Yeah, just a reminder, we mentioned it last week, but the, uh, treasure chest will open on Saturday. It'll be, uh, drop-off only, so they have a chance to get organized. And then they will, Sunday it will be both drop-off and pickup. And it is for Harwich residents only. Uh, not all secrets will be available. I, I see we have a sign coming in, we can, uh, order them online right now. And so they are available, but, uh, again, Saturday, uh, I don't know, I'll be there with stuff.
Go ahead, Joe, Don?
Yeah, and further to that, uh, you probably lacerate me for saying this because some people like to do these things, uh, quietly. But, uh, I'd like to send out a great thank you to, uh, Harwich Paint and Decorating and Paul and Lynn Fox because they gave quite a bit of paint to be able to spruce up the place. So it's civic-minded people like that that help us all the time.
The board, if you could send me which articles you want to speak on, otherwise I'm going to randomly select articles, um, in case there's a question for the board. So if you email me tomorrow which ones you absolutely want, otherwise I'm just going to divvy them up.
Okay.
And then toward the trash, uh, through the Conservation Commission is Saturday, ten to twelve. Sign up at the community center and get your garbage bags and help clean up our streets. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.